Would you like to open up the meeting? Go ahead. So we just have a few formalities in opening up the meeting and then we'll have the presentation that most of you are here for. So are there any adjustments at all to the agenda?
I have nothing.
I have nothing, okay. Is there any public comment before we get started? All right. So we'll approve the bills to the town. The select board will do that by signing them after the meeting. And do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the October 25th, 2021, Select Board meeting?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I would like to introduce Bob Link. He's the Conservation Director for the Northeast Wilderness Trust. And he's here to present to those that are here tonight the Woodbury Mountains Wilderness Preserve. So Bob, would you prefer to just give your presentation and then we'll entertain questions? Or would you -- or should people feel free to ask questions as you're going?
I guess, why don't we leave it? If you have something really pressing, sure, but maybe a lot of the questions will be answered in the course of a fairly short presentation. And then I'll be open to -- we'll be open to questions at the end anyway. So we'll see. See how it goes.
Okay. So, good. So Bob, you have more, I guess.
All right.
Lights are good?
You'll have to tell me how well I'm projecting. I'm not used to projecting through a mask. So how's it going so far?
Good.
Okay? So I am Bob Link. I work for Northeast Wilderness Trust. I came to Newt, and you can feel free to call our staff "Newts." We like the name. I came to Newt in February of this year, largely after working for 19 years for the Vermont Land Trust throughout the Champlain Valley and central Vermont. My real love has always been conservation of wild lands. And Newt is really the only organization in the Northeast that does that. And so I was eager to take a chance and apply for the job, and I'm happy to be here. Sophie Veltrop is here tonight as well. She works for Northeast Wilderness Trust for outreach and communications. So we are here tonight, of course, to just kind of give a quick rundown of what we're proposing with the creation of the Woodbury Mountains Wilderness Preserve. First of all, just to be clear about who we are, Northeast Wilderness Trust is a nonprofit land trust. We're based in Montpelier. We focus exclusively on wild lands and wilderness conservation in all of the New England states and New York. But in New York, it's predominantly right now in the Adirondacks. And we're doing some additional work in the Adirondacks or the Algonquin-Adirondacks corridor, which kind of stretches from the Thousand Islands region up into the Adirondacks and is connected to the Canadian wilderness. So that's the region we focus on. And our tools are similar to all land trusts. We focus on both acquisition of preserves, fee lands, as we call them, purchasing lands to own in perpetuity. We also work with landowners and other land trusts at times, or other public entities, to permanently conserve with forever-wild easements some of their own preserves or land that people own privately and would like to conserve with a stricter conservation easement that includes the forever-wild provisions. I'll talk a bit about that in a minute. To date, we have about 41,000 acres, sort of split between fee-owned lands, so preserves that we hold, and easements that we hold. So this concept of forever-wild, you may be familiar with it, you may not be familiar with it. But far from being a strange new term, although it may be new to many of you, it has been around a long time. It really originated in the Adirondacks, where there's actually a constitutional clause that all the state-owned land in the Catskills and Adirondacks are forever-wild lands, never to be harvested further, timber not taken off. It's basically wild lands in perpetuity. And for that to ever change, there would have to be a constitutional amendment, and it's a very complicated process to change that. So that's where the term came from. Similarly, in Baxter Park, which was created -- began to be created back in 1930 when former Governor Percival Baxter donated 6,000 acres to the state, it is likewise -- or likewise there's forever-wild essentially land in Baxter. I think it's about 125,000 acres now. So it goes back a long time, and Northeast Wilderness Trust adopted that approach because we saw that there wasn't anybody doing that. And there's lots of ecological reasons why we would like to -- and scientists, ecologists, and even state agencies would like to see more wild lands throughout the Northeast. Quick project summary, we started working with the Meyer family and E.B. Hyde Company back in January of this year. Their excellently managed forest land is a great candidate for forever-wild protection. It's further along in its maturity, and it's got a lot of ecological values. We're currently scheduled to close on the acquisition of the property in mid-December. Our fundraising, we've reached about the $4 million mark towards a total budget of $6.5 million. One of the grant sources that we are seeking funding from is the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, the VHCB for short. And that's one of the main reasons for presenting tonight is we're hoping that the Select Board will consider writing a letter of support on behalf of the application. VHCB has historically, since 1987, been very involved in communities, both helping to create affordable housing throughout needed affordable housing parts of Vermont. They also -- the other side of their mission is conservation. And each year, it's statutorily through the property transfer tax, 50% of the property transfers tax is supposed to go into VHCB's coffers for responding to the needs of affordable housing and conservation. And when there's a lot of property being transferred, naturally, there's a lot of demand for both affordable housing and a lot of pressure on wild areas and agricultural land. And so it sort of fluctuates when the need is there. It has never been -- well, I shouldn't say never, but for a long time, it had not been fully funded. And periodically, there have been additional funding streams that come into VHCB, but basically, it doesn't come from taxpayers per se. It's through the property transfer tax. Occasionally, they have a capital appropriation that raises additional funding. I don't know, could you see that map, by the way? You get an idea, all the pink lands are what we're talking about. They're labeled EB 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, I think. But you can see the basic layout there. And we do have a handout here where -- that map appears in there, right? So we do have a map you can take away that shows similar. One thing that you should know about how we do our work, Northeast Wilderness Trust, needless to say, is focused on wilderness, wild lands conservation. That's our mission. It's highly unlikely that we would ever stray beyond that because we have such a distinct role. And it's highly unlikely that our board would ever decide that the lands that we hold and own should do something else other than what our mission is directed to do. So nevertheless, we like to have a second layer of legal protection on the properties we own. So in the case of this project, we sought Vermont River Conservancy to be the holder of a conservation easement that would give that extra protection. So they've agreed to do that. And if the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board does make a major grant to us, they will be a co-hoster of that easement. So it's sort of backup protection for this to stay the way we're proposing it will stay. As far as the tax implications for local communities, all the land is currently in the Use Value Appraisal Program, the current use program. EB Hyde, of course, has had it enrolled that way. That status will not change. We believe in paying taxes. We also believe we would like to enroll it in the current use program. Conservation organizations are allowed. There's a special category for enrolling as a conservation organization. We are not required to harvest and cut firewood or anything like that. We can keep it as wild land through the program, but it should not change anything with regard to the taxation. I already talked about VHCB and the property tax, property transfer tax, so I'll let that one alone for now. The other -- one of the other major things people are probably curious about is public access. The family, of course, is largely allowed public access. This is a way of making that permanent, essentially. We're not going to close it to public use. It will be available for all kinds of pedestrian recreation, hunting, hiking, backcountry skiing, snowshoeing. There are existing rights of way, West Woodbury Road and Eagle Edge Trail prominent among them. We will not change the status of those. The public can continue to use those. We're also planning to establish sort of two trail segments, formalizing an approach from the north, from the Hardwick direction, and another from Woodbury up Woodbury Mountain. So the public access is going to be a permanent provision of what we expect the property will serve the public to do. In terms of the important aspects about it, about the property, it sits at a crossroads for far-ranging wildlife. You've got to the west, you've got the Worcester Mountain Range, which is really the last undeveloped mountain range in Vermont. The north, to the north is Northeast Kingdom, and it has become recognized as the Worcester-to-Kingdom linkage for wildlife movement. And this preserve kind of lies in the heart of that linkage, which is between three large forested blocks totaling 85,000 acres. You won't be able to see those maps, but I'll tell you what they represent in a second. Vermont conservation design is something that was undertaken by the Department of Fish and Wildlife with lots of help from other entities and ecologists throughout the state. And their intent was really to create a plan that secures and sustains Vermont's natural areas and wildlife. One goal of the plan is for, and notably for this, the purposes of this preserve, one goal is for old forest, older forest, lands 150-plus, 200-years-old, plus eventually ancient forest, to comprise at least 9% of Vermont's landscape. Currently, there's only 3% of Vermont's landscape that is legally protected in a way that will ensure that these forests reach maturity and stay that way. So permanent conservation of large landscapes like this proposed preserve is essential to meeting that goal. What you're seeing in this above here is this map to the left, you are seeing all the conserved land highlighted in the region that we -- well, all the states we cover. And that's a lot of land. If you look at the second one, that is the land that is considered old forest, protected as wilderness, or land that will become old forest, protected in a way that legally will lead it to that endpoint. So you can see Vermont, the spine of the Green Mountains, there's some highlights because of wilderness areas, land that is in Green Mountain National Forest, but just a smattering of that is found elsewhere in the state. Did I skip anything there? Let's see, no. Okay. The proposed preserve also stands out for its diversity of natural communities. It's a critical habitat for wide-ranging predators like bear, fishers, and bobcats, as well as for salamanders and tiny fingernail clams. There's lots of American beech and black cherry trees, which are critical sources of food for wildlife that are preparing for winter. And you should also note that most protected wilderness in the Northeast is at higher elevations. In the west, they call it rock and ice because it's the land that nobody really wanted to do much or could do much with. That's not strictly true, but there's a preponderance of higher elevation land wherever you're talking about wilderness areas. And the fact is that lower elevation habitats host greater biodiversity. They're key wildlife corridors for wildlife that are moving and adapting to climate change. And in the case of the preserve, the average elevation is 1,550 feet, which means it will become Vermont's largest privately-protected low-elevation wilderness preserve. The proposed preserve also lies in sort of a divide between the Lemoill and Winuski Rivers, both of which, of course, drain into Lake Champlain. And maintaining old forest for -- old forest cover for the lakes' headwater streams is a very effective and cost-efficient way of protecting the lake's health. Audubon has mapped this area as Vermont's only important bird area of global significance. Preserving unmanaged forest within this largely managed landscape here in Vermont will ensure birds like the winter wrens, northern goshawks, blackburnian, and black-throated blue warblers, which all thrive in old forest, will continue to be good homes for their species. And incidentally, the saw-wet owl that you see in this photo thrives in spruce-cinnamon fern swamps, and there are at least 12 of those on the former EB Hyde lands. Old forests not only store immense amounts of carbon, they also are considerably more effective at removing carbon from the atmosphere than young forests. So it makes them sort of a key natural climate solution. Right now, the land, we had an inventory done of the carbon on the property. The land currently stores at least 546,000 metric tons of carbon and has the capacity to sequester, capture, an additional 1,155 metric tons each year. And if protected as forever-wild, its stored carbon will never be lost to resource extraction. A lot of the forests that are in the carbon markets are managed forests, and after 40 years, often the contract runs out, and there's certainly a chance, a very good chance, that the harvesting will take place after that, and the carbon will be lost. With a wilderness protection program like we are involved in, that will never be the case. It will remain protected and not harvested. And I guess, to wrap up, I just want to say thanks for having us here tonight. We're very appreciative of the Meyer family for all the years, the decades that they've managed, very well managed, the forest, and for their willingness to consider this kind of an outcome for land that they were trying to figure out what the future would be. So we're grateful for that. I know it's a different kind of proposal than is typical, but I think that's what's so exciting about it. And we're certainly hopeful you will be supportive of it in the public and that the Select Board will support it. And I'm happy to take questions. Anything you want to ask?
Just clarifying, hunting with no traffic, yes?
Yes.
No wheel vehicles at all? That would include bikes?
No mountain bikes, but right now, there's a vast trail that goes -- that comes through the property. We'll continue to allow that vast trail at its current site, and they may have an idea for rerouting if it goes along an existing woods road. We would entertain that. In terms of wheel vehicles, the public right-of-ways currently are used by more than just feet. So right now, there is traffic through there. We're not closing those off.
So you're not -- so wheel vehicles will be able to go through there?
Well, right now, in the public right-of-ways, if there are wheel vehicles allowed on those now, we cannot change that, you know, laterally.
It's still a town road.
Are these the class four roads?
Yeah. You've got the one up from County Road, and then you've got Slade Pond all the way across. They're town roads or class four roads.
So you're probably familiar with the history of the swamp vehicles and stuff. And the Meyer family had a dickens at the time trying to prevent that from happening. How are you going to enforce this in terms of preventing such cases in the future?
Well, we've had a lot of experience in other preserves and other parts of our region, and we're going to have patience. We're going to try to work and figure out ways to make the conditions better. And I don't know yet how we'll approach it. We won't be doing anything, of course, on the public right-of-ways without coordination with people, landowners that are affected by it on either side of us, with the Select Boards. At this point, we know it's going to be a challenge, but we're going to embrace it, and slowly over time, maybe conditions will improve.
Thank you. You had mentioned trail access from both Hardwick and Woodbury.
Yes.
And the trail access from Woodbury, is that going to be on the western edge of the town over to West Woodbury, or is it going to be on this side of town, or could be both?
I don't know yet. We're going to spend some time trying to look at, once we get ownership of the property. We've been thinking a little bit about it and talking to the Meyer family and seeing what the current conditions are. And we're, I guess, stay tuned. We'll be happy to take input from people who have ideas about it. We know it's something that would be valuable and important for the public. Yes?
Yeah, similar question, that trail access, but you said formalize the trails. Maybe that's kind of what, maybe I skipped it out there. So, you know, maybe you don't have the exact plans, but from past experience, what does that look like? Is it signage? Is it maps? Is it doing work on the trails? Is it -- yeah?
Yeah, a little bit of all. We would design a trail that we think would be -- would stand the test of time. In other words, it would not be a route that would lead to a lot of erosion problems. And so we basically do a trail planning exercise and make it so that it's not going to create problems that we don't want to create.
So kind of follow-up to that.
Yep.
That could be significant capital application to that. So is that included in the budget for the purchase, or is that kind of funding for that potentially come later?
Yeah, it depends a little bit, but we have -- we're raising a fair amount of money for that sort of thing as part of the overall project. And if we find it's not enough, we will raise money separately for that if necessary. Yes?
I've got a question. Our school has been working towards outdoor education. We've got some beautiful land right around the school here. Would you be agreeable to working with the school for some field trips or science and study projects?
Certainly.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Good.
Yes.
If you were to put it on the balance and say, what effect will this have to the well-being of the average Woodbury citizen, and how will it enhance the long-range effect on the community? And what would be the most dramatic changes that the average Woodbury person would experience? And what would be the benefits that he could expect?
Oh, talk --
Good question.
I guess, I guess what I would -- I guess I would say that, first of all, Woodbury would stand out among all the communities in Vermont for having a very high percentage of land that was going to be sequestering carbon, was going to be creating ecological conditions that are rare in the state. There's something about wild land that it's hard to express if you've not been in old or ancient forest. It's magical. I grew up in the Adirondacks in the summertime. At the time, I didn't really realize how special it was, but I still have land over there that the -- my family had a wilderness canoeing camp over there, and I grew up visiting old forests that were becoming ancient forests. And there's just nothing quite like it. So I think the long-term benefits are access to land that is unique over time. And the educational and kind of, if you're spiritual, spiritual benefits, the feeling that you get in the woods is different. And I think that is the long-term biggest benefit of what's happening here. It also, you know, you will see, in general, less impacts from flooding. You will see more wildlife because it will be moving through an area that is protected instead of further fragmented. So there's a lot of long-term benefits that are not immediately obvious, but they will be very special. And you will not see further fragmentation of what is iconic, an iconic landscape in the town of Woodbury. And I think the educational benefits, things that students and adults can learn about something so close to home, there, it's, you're going to be the envy of this part of the state and the whole state. Yes?
How many acres is the Woodbury portion?
Oh, boy. I should know the answer to this. Do you?
It's about half.
Is it about half? Okay. So it's 5,459 acres. I think there's high 2,000s, mid to high 2,000s in Woodbury?
Yes.
To follow up on Peter's question about class four roads and town trails?
Yes.
To be clear and transparent, the only thing that can change there would be through the Select Board, is that correct?
We would have to change that. We'd have to change the status.
Your town, your town class four roads, and the town via the Select Board would be the only entity that could change the status of those. So ideally, I would think that would be your goal.
Well, I think ideally, what we're really looking for, I think, long-term, is that conditions for access improve, meaning conditions for people who, right now, you can't walk in some places, you have to kind of go off to the side because there is a lot of damage to the existing rights of way. So I think we're, you know, if use is not damaging what's there, we have no problem with it. But if it's causing resource issues, which right now it is, we would like to see that improve, and if we can figure out a way to work with everyone to make that happen.
Well, let me figure my question. So ideally, you would like to have more forward vision, more motorcycles, more drop speed, stuff like that, on those rights-of-way roads, those class four roads?
I would say that we're, on the ATV side of things, we're primarily looking to make sure that they don't go off that track. Right now, there's plenty of areas where they go off, and that's where you're on private land, that's where you're doing resource damage, and that's been a problem for the Meyers. It would be a problem for us when we own it. So we'd like to kind of begin to see improvements. So I think we're, you know, if use is not damaging what's there, we have no problem with it. But if it's causing resource issues, which right now it is, we would like to see that improve. And if we can figure out a way to work with everyone to make that happen.
Well, let me figure my question. So ideally, you would like to have more forward vision, more motorcycles, more trucks, stuff like that, on those rights of way, on those class four roads?
I would say that we're, on the ATV side of things, we're primarily looking to make sure that they don't go off that track. Right now, there's plenty of areas where they, they go off. And that's where you're on private land. That's where you're doing resource damage. And that's been a problem for the Myers. It would be a problem for us when we own it. So we'd like to kind of begin to see improvements there. In terms of the Maine thoroughfare, if they're staying, if they're not causing damage there and the towns are okay with it, we don't have a problem with that continuing. If it continues to be a persistent problem over time, maybe there's ways to address it, but we're not there yet. And I think we'll just have to kind of see, you know, how things go over time.
Monty, just speaking as a Select Board member, you know, those two roads, the west Woodbury road and what we affectionately call the Ho Chi Minh Trail, those will continue to remain as accessible to ATV traffic. Personally, I would wish that the mud boggers would go somewhere else because that's the type of vehicle that does the most damage. In my time here in Woodbury, walking up what's called the Woodbury Road or the Ho Chi Minh Trail, when I first moved here, I probably could have driven my Subaru up over that hill into west Woodbury. And now it's just ledge and mud and it's really eroded an amazing amount over the last 30 years. But it's still a favorite trail for people to use. And I don't see the town changing that at all. And, you know, I think at this point in time, the towns, municipalities are responsible for erosion on class four roads. So it may be at some point in the future that the town would need to address some of those issues from, from just use in general, whether it's logging or ATVs or whatever, you know, vehicles. But there's, I don't see the town doing anything to close off that type of traffic. Yes?
So I feel like I have nice messages about this pretty frequently. I've heard comments from you and other Select Board members previously that the town wasn't particularly trying to close these roads off to ATV traffic. But I've also seen minutes from recent Select Board meetings that said otherwise. I think actually you brought up specifically.
I probably did.
Trying to close some of the roads. And I also saw a recent comment on Front Course Forum about a future role being to close down some of those class four roads to vehicle access. That's a big concern for me.
I think what I said Elizabeth is that there is another classification for a class four road to a trail, which means it's still owned by the town. And it pretty much eliminates the town's responsibility for any type of maintenance at all. So, you know, if there were erosion issues that through the general road permit, the town was responsible for with the class four road, reclassifying it to a trail would eliminate the town's responsibility for that. Like the Ho Chi Minh Trail, two, three summers ago, we had the Youth Conservation Corps go up both the west and the east side of that road to put in bars to help with, get water off the road. And, you know, I'm not sure what state those bars are in now, but that was a project that the town didn't have to pay any money for. And it was meant to help slow down the erosion, you know, get the water that might be channeled down a tire track and just continually washing away the road to get that water off the road so that the road would still be functionable.
You did, oh, well, they're still there in the lower section where they didn't, you know, you're feeding up for the time, but they did all, over these years.
So as far as declassifying them, you know, bringing them down from roads to trails, the only one that I'm familiar with that that's happened with was one up near Buck Lake that was a class four road. And when that was reclassified as a trail, it was also at the same time closed down to motor vehicles. So like if you're talking about reclassifying these roads, would you also be talking about limiting access?
Those are, that section of road is closed in the summertime when the Buck Lake Camp is open. Otherwise, it is accessible.
To motor vehicle, ATVs, et cetera?
ATVs, hopefully not, not the mud boggers, but ATVs, yes. Part of the reason for closing it during the summer while the camp is in session is that, you know, there are kids up there and then there might be a squadron of ATVs that come ripping right through the camp. So it was kind of working with fish and wildlife to keep that road closed during the summer season when the camp is in session.
Yeah, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more about how the lands can remain in the use value appraisal program and the timber not being cut? My understanding is that you can enroll a portion of it. It's through the conservation status of your organization that you're able to get tighter.
Yes.
It just seems kind of intuitive because UBA is, is really for managing forests.
Right.
And, you know, there can be, you know, I think portions of land can be enrolled in ESTAs, what's called ESTAs.
Right. Yeah, it's nature conservancy, other conservation organizations, including Northeast Wilderness Trust, are permitted to enroll as conservation organizations and are not required to harvest. So nature conservancy is probably the best example. They've got 55 or so preserves around the state. And they typically do not manage those, some perhaps a little bit, but basically they enroll in current use. And I think there's been a general recognition that it's a fairly rare circumstance, but it also provides great ecological benefits that the state recognizes. They don't, they don't extend that right to the private landowner, other than the conservation private landowner. So the program has never promoted ecological protection of the sort that we do. And that may change over time. There has been, you know, some movement towards considering changes to the current use program that would allow those landowners who are interested in protecting their land with, say, a forever wild easement and being able to get the property tax benefits. But right now, that's not the case. The only exception is, as you say, the ESTAs, the areas that are treated specially and your forester will designate them as such. And you'll get ecologists to kind of say, yeah, that's an area that should be kept out of harvesting. But anyway, the conservation organization out is the only one that allows that sort of enrollment without harvesting.
Thank you.
I was just curious, how is it that you guys would, I used to say you would require a free permit for hunting? And I'm curious how that works because like I think, you know, I want to not have someone hunt on my land, I would have to post it by permission only or something like that. I'm curious like what mechanism and how you guys would go about doing that?
Yeah, we basically, we say hunting with permission. And we, it's a free permit process. We just like to know that, you know, who's, who's hunting on the property. We have a very successful hunting program on our other preserves in Maine. And people just call in and say, can you send me a permit, that I can, permit application? You can do it online, whatever way is easiest for you. And, and that's, it's a fairly straightforward program.
So it's sort of honor system?
It is an honor system.
Do you believe there's no way for you to do that without posting the land? I mean, you can hunt on unposted land.
That's right. I mean, you, it's an honor system, basically.
Unless you're there with a couple people, I guess.
Yes.
Would you be seeking any permits from other people that use the property for, say, snowshoeing, hiking or whatever?
No.
Just that?
Just hunting. Yep. Yes.
My understanding with currys is that you can't post your land. I know you're not talking about posting it, but it just doesn't seem consistent to me with that, to be requiring people to ask for permits. I'm only saying this because, you know, obviously this is a huge tract of land and many of us have been hunting portions of it for a really long time. So this has become a big change for the Woodbury people.
I guess there would be a change then, yes. Can't deny that. But again, it's a fairly straightforward process and it's, you know, you could have, I mean, the alternative is eventually an owner who does post the land and says, no hunting. And this way, we, we believe that hunting can be important for the ecosystem. And this is the way we prefer to do it.
Mr. Elizabeth, can I just ask you really quickly? Did you ever ask permission from the Meyer family?
Uh, no, I never have.
What, we, right, Chris, we never have.
About that?
We never, we never have.
I just have a comment to that too. You know, I hunt, I grew up in a hunting family. And the ethic that I learned was that if you're going to hunt on somebody else's land, that you get permission to do that, which is what I've done here in Woodbury. So it's, it's pretty much the same thing. I'm, you know, I know that, no, if it's not posted, it's pretty much understood that you can hunt on there, you don't need to ask permission. But that, that's kind of the way I was taught from my family is that if you're going to hunt on somebody's land, you should, you know, get permission from them.
So it's a slight change, Mr. Elizabeth, because we will have another potential group that we have to go through. But it's a fairly straightforward process, the way that we understand it to this point. But we're not making any decisions right now.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I guess for me, I'm having a hard time understanding that even if I'm going to snowshoe on someone else's property, you should ask.
Right, I have the same issue.
I'm really struggling to understand why there is this bias against hunting. And to ask, would, that would be a situation where you would deny somebody. And why, why would you want to have a registration of hunters on the land? I mean...
Well, for one thing, it's good to know what the hunting pressure is.
But why doesn't that apply to snowshoers, cross country skiers? Why is that bias there?
Well, I think if you're carrying a firearm, that's a little bit different, I think, than snowshoeing, isn't it?
I carry a firearm a lot of times.
I guess, I don't, I don't understand.
May I speak to this not as a Select Board member, but as to someone who has mapped the entire, so I'm not speaking as your Select Board member. I'm speaking as a geologist who mapped all of the Woodbury quadrangle. Did I walk around?
Did you ask permission?
Yes. Hundred percent. Every single parcel that I walked on. No questions. So I always acted that way, but that was just my mentality because I am reviewing a landscape that is not mine. I didn't take anything. And if you're going to hunt a property, you do potentially take things.
It's a public resource, it's not privately owned.
It's not privately owned. But you're crossing someone else's land.
Just like there would be snowshoeing in...
Absolutely.
Across country skiing.
So there is a balance here. We're trying to find that balance here. And so this is a really important discussion to have.
What balance?
Well, we don't, we don't know yet. That's why we're having this conversation.
So you're not making any sense. He said that that's going to be the rule, the way this transaction goes through. It's not, it's not going to be a decision for you many later.
We haven't decided on any rules yet, sir.
You just said that that's going to be the way it's going to be.
We haven't, we haven't decided on any rules yet.
Well, I mean, we...
What are you speaking of?
Sophie, you want to?
I'm not speaking at all.
Let's, let's try to keep things so hopefully...
Not speaking at all, yes.
Could I, I just want to say that Murphy's Wilderness Trust doesn't deny anybody's hunting permission. And staff in the course of our preserves, hunters have been some of our greatest allies. They're before, on the ground, they go off the trail, they see so many things that the average person doesn't. And I just want to make sure that you know that the hunting program is supposed to be there to welcome and to create those connections and not to make hunters have to...
Jump in another hoop.
And the goal is to create those connections and build that relationship. And so we've seen that on our other preserves. And it's not, yeah, we also really value the, the role that hunters play in the ecosystem. So I just want to make sure that you know that there's no like denying of hunting. That's not the purpose of the program at all.
Can you explain what is the purpose of the registration system?
Yes, it's for keeping it touch and building community. And that's what we've seen on the other preserves where we have these connections building with people who are on the ground who know the lands better than anybody else.
You said, I didn't hear what you were saying.
Yeah, sorry. I'm speaking to my, because it's important. Right. I was just explaining that the hunting permission system doesn't deny anybody permission, it's to keep those connections and build that community. And Murphy's Wilderness Trust really values the role of hunters in this system that's been, you know, out of balance without having predators. The deer pressure on our forests is immense. And in other other preserves, we've seen those connections be really important. So I just want to make sure it's clear that there's no denying of anybody's connections.
So if you want to make connections with hunters, why would you want the same thing for snowshoers, hikers and skiers? Or an apartment at all? And why would you want those connections?
That's, that's a great question. And that's really interesting.
That's why we're talking about it. That's why we're talking about it.
And something that we've done for other places is to start to have like a log book where people sign in. We try and get people to sign up for our email list. So yes, we do want to build those connections too.
I think this gentleman's back over here. Where is this gentleman back?
So as a hunter, you know, and I've spent a lot of time in Woodbury Mountain. I've hiked at a lot. When I'm looking for deer, I'm going to go to where the food source is. Most food sources for deer are like logging areas that are like four or five years old. That's where I'm finding deer. I'm not finding it in old growth forests. So I, I mean, the managing of forests is to keep food coming in, new growth. I mean, one thing I've learned about New Hampshire, Maine, they have really good deer populations. We don't have a good deer population here at all. And that's one thing they do is they log and they take care of their forests.
Can I take?
I just think, you know, I guess I'm kind of opposed to this, or I would prefer the Select Board not to write this letter of support. And I just think forever is a very long time and it kind of smacks of hubris to say that, you know, we know enough about what the needs of our community and, you know, our great, 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 great grandchildren will be to, you know, support this big restriction, restriction on this piece of property. And, you know, I kind of see it in a trend of, you know, nationally, like the kind of gutting of rural communities where, you know, you see a loss of urban landscapes, be it woods or farms. And, you know, that we end up becoming sort of places where people can't work, you know, unless it's to, you know, work on the homes, the vacation homes, work on people's vacation homes. Other than that, you know, it's a veteran community and you gotta drive an hour of work, which is a very, very difficult night. So that's all I have, sorry.
All right, I think that's pointed out. Paul, I was wondering if you could repeat something you said a few minutes ago about what might happen to hunting access if someone else purchases the property? I'm not sure everyone heard you.
Well, I mean, you could imagine a scenario where somebody decided to purchase the property as a retreat from New York City or whatever, and they do not allow hunting and they patrol it and they make sure that you can't use it. That is a definite possibility. We are offering an option for continued public use of the property, including hunting.
Yes, please go ahead.
I think I support the Select Board approving this or supporting this. I wrote a question about, when, I look at the ridge, I've been here for 60 years and I see it's pristine, it hasn't changed, it's not like anything would be taken away. But my, my fear is waking up one morning and seeing windmills along that ridge and whatnot, because some promoter has the money to do it. And I talked with, on an email, and you assured me that this can't happen. You can't dance with the devil and, and put in anything, development like that. As far as people liking things the way they were, there never was development out there. There was logging and there's always going to be a controversy for that, you know, about. But there's acres and acres being logged around here anyway. So I just wanted to, what is my support? And thank you. And, uh, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, um, I, I, just to go off a conversation that happened just a minute ago, I've seen that happen, um, where I, I lived on Hawaii, and I watched thousands of acres that were public get bought up in a day by Facebook, and suddenly we can't go there anymore. I used to work at a little school with kids, and suddenly it's like, oh, it's gone. And, um, you know, I hear stories of hedge funds and other, you know, people investing in very large properties. I see this organization that's based in Vermont, that has goals that are centered around, you know, addressing climate change and biodiversity collapse and fragmentation and these things that I'm so grateful for, that, that you're, you know, have this in mind. Um, I guess that's, you know, mostly a comment, but my question is, you mentioned that you'd like the support of the people in Woodbury, and for those of us who do wanna support you in this project, how can you best do that?
Well, we are, um, I guess there's, there's many ways you can support the organization for this particular project. We are in a fundraising mode, um, so financial support to help with the acquisition. We also, um, are, we have properties that we, um, have volunteer monitors for, uh, to visit periodically, because we have conservation easements and/or properties that we, um, we just keep track of perpetually. We have a permanent responsibility for that. So our stewardship team frequently embraces opportunities or volunteers who wanna join in on that. Um, Sophie, any other thoughts about things to help?
Um, well, you know, true thing, building a community around this place is a part of what we're excited about, so if you are interested in taking school kids out, uh, bringing us for a hike, putting up signs, um, hunting on the land, um, being in touch, and we do want to grow a, a network of people who care and are connected to this land. Um, and we're gonna have, like, fifteen, a part of that, so we can find that doors, and, um, we will have our plan of information, et cetera, available.
Uh, we've got a few questions. I'm sorry, I'm trying to go over.
So I got another question. So do you have any intentions on any logging or anything like that in the future?
No.
Okay, are you working with Vermont Fishing Game?
Well, one exception, there is a 32-acre section of the property for roughly eight-acre plots that were plantation pines, um, and we're kind of exploring a, a relationship with UVM to treat them differently, to eventually transition them into a new forest type and see which treatments might get us to old growth in a, in a, a different way. So it's a minor part of the property, but it's something that we, we decided we might approach.
And are you at all working with Vermont Department of Fishing Game on the management of the property?
No, not right now.
Are you supposed to be, or not?
No, we, it's private land, we can manage it the way we're intending to, which is to base, basically be hands-off and let natural processes take their course.
I'm sorry, this is in the back with the hat.
I would just like to add that, um, with, like, catastrophic global climate change that's happening, Vermont is going to be a refuge for lots of people with climate change, the way that the Great Mountains hold water here, and, um, we are gonna see a lot of refugees from around this country come to Vermont. And we, this is such an important project to make sure that there is land preserved for the wildlife here that can stay pristine. I used to live in the Pacific Northwest and study land that had been, that was managed by the state. I lived next to a wildlife preserve that had, uh, land in current use behind me, Buffalo Mountain. And I came back five years later, and they had logged all the state land behind there, and the entire wildlife refuge, all the trees had been knocked down. There were eagles there, otters there, tons of wildlife that had been catastrophically destroyed, and that, that wildlife was lost because that land was misdamaged. And so I would like to see places in Vermont that are preserved to hold space for these animals that are also seeking refuge from climate change. And, you know, the red hot, so we see here come all the way from Brazil, and they breed here. And so I think that they have every right to life during climate change, we do, and we have to set up land refuge for them.
Thanks, guys. Sorry, uh, map? Map?
Yeah, I just wanna, maybe speeding that horse at this point, but it's really important that we acknowledge that change is going to happen with this land base right now. There's an ownership transition that's going to happen in some fashion. This is an opportunity for us to have input in that process and build a relationship with a new owner who's coming through us, as opposed to who knows what. If this doesn't happen with Murphy's Wilderness Trust, we have no idea what could happen. There's even wind turbines on top. We could, as Bob said, it could become posted, no access, no public access of any sort. Um, this is an opportunity that preserves the vast majority of the public, uh, benefit that we currently get from this property. Hunting access, recreational access of all sorts, hiking, skiing, uh, other, uh, motorized use of the public, uh, rights of way through the property, all the scenic benefits to the town, um, not to mention the whole host of ecological benefits, wildlife, and all of that sort of thing. Um, so I think this is an incredible opportunity for us that we should not pass, clearly. Uh, this essentially guarantees that we maintain most of the benefits that we're currently receiving, and it costs us absolutely nothing. It'd be foolish to pass it up.
I'd like to just make a comment about the wind turbines, if you don't mind. Just, I'm not sure if everyone is aware of the history of, of that property with the Meyer family. It was probably 10, 15, maybe even 20 years ago that there was a developer that was interested in, in putting wind turbines on that Woodbury mountain ridge. They approached the Meyer family, um, and fortunately, the Meyer family came to speak with residents in Woodbury about whether or not they would want that. Um, and they pretty much overwhelmingly were told that, no, um, that, you know, the residents that they spoke with did not want that to happen, and the Meyer family, um, told the developer, um, "Sorry, we're not gonna do that." Um, so that was and is a possibility with a different landowner. Fortunately, you know, in my opinion, it didn't happen then, and, um, hopefully it'll never happen. But I just want, I'm not sure if everyone's aware of that history or not.
Peter was, Peter, please go.
I just wanted to reinforce what the gentleman in the fourth said about the transition. Um, you know, Hugo and Justice Wheeler mapped about a third of the land maps of this town in the 50s, and we, we really have been going through, I remember being on the, the lister board before it occurred, you skate, and we had to, we had to negotiate with Hugo and John, pre-tactory each year, just to sort of, um, but it's, it was a unique situation, and, uh, but we have benefited from it, because it's been totally undeveloped. I, I, a week ago, uh, we took it, my wife and I, Kath, we took an airplane ride out of Newport and went all around, it was a beautiful day. I was amazed at, to see some of these areas that had been, have these two or three-mile driveways going up to the very highest point on these ridges, and, and that's not beyond the pale that could happen around here. And, uh, and that's what I mean by, this has been a really unique situation, and that we're in the transition period, that we really should be very cautious and, and, and try to look out the dangers of, of the entire ecosystem and, and the, and the, uh, community. Um, and this is delivered in that sense, and I think it's, I'm firmly in favor of this, because, uh, it could be developed, it really could be developed.
Sir?
I support this, to protect, help to protect water. We have more water than any town in Vermont, so it'll help to protect the water, help to protect from development. I think we'd all rather see large trees out there than towers or turbines. They're remain, keeping access open. It's not, maybe not ideal for all of us, but they'll be our neighbors. They're asking us to let them know if we wanna hunt. Okay, we can work with them. They're not, uh, they're, they're allowing access to motorized vehicles. The, the issue is not access, and I know it's on the public road, but through the property, the issue is not access, it's damage. So we can work to stop the damage. And we will lose, we will lose some, uh, timber harvesting potentially, but maybe that'll be offset by folks coming into town, moving to town, maybe there'll be some different interests that develop in Woodbury. Hey, this is a town that takes care of its land, takes care of its neighbors, it's preserving, uh, preserving its, its important resources. So maybe we'll, maybe we'll have more tourists coming in, we'll get a general store going, more home-based businesses.
That's fair.
So I, I think there's, I think there's more to gain here than we will lose. So I support it.
Jack?
As I understand it, the issue before the select board tonight is whether to write a letter of support for this project that can go to VHCB. And I'm, I'm wondering if it would be out of order to ask for a show of hands of the people in this room who would support that better going forward.
Or to do, uh, 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 a writing ballot, you know, to write in, and just...
Like a town meeting, now, we have to have a certain percentage of the people in the town.
It's not gonna matter how we go, if we do that, so how does it work?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm interested in people's viewpoint. I'm one of, as a sitting board member in the hot seat on this deal, one of my concerns I have with this is, we're being asked to support this, and I'm a budding landowner, I've lived there for almost 30 years. First I heard about it was two weeks ago, and as a select board member, the first I heard about this was two weeks ago. Um, we, and there's been some comments and concerns, which I think are valid, shared, um, and we haven't been asked for any input, so it's really not an input thing, it's sort of like a support or not support, in my opinion.
What, Vermont Housing and Conservation Board is interested in the opinions from officials and the public on applications that come before them. Um, for them to make a grant, they like to see letters of support from local officials. So specifically, we're looking for, as described, a letter of support for our application to get a grant from them to do what we're proposing.
Okay, and then just to back up for me personally is, private sellers, you guys raising the money privately to buy all the land, we don't really need any input. Um, but when we take the taxpayer money, this is my concern, once we start collecting taxpayer dollars, I think taxpayers should have some input. And, and just let me clarify, even though it's a, it's a limited source, it's still, like, if I sell my house, I gotta pay that tax, it's not a choice for me, and that, that's my concern, is that the, the taxpayers aren't being represented in that portion. So again, fully understanding that if you get all private donors for the $6.5 million and you're a private foundation, you, you're right, you, that's two happy parties doing their thing. My concern is, is whether I wanna support that, just 'cause there, I don't see any taxpayer input, like, there's concerns with the hunting, which I didn't know about. Um, and, and again, that's what I'm just struggling with, is, 'cause I didn't even know about this till two weeks ago. So it's, for me, I need to kind of have a little more time to absorb this and kind of think about it.
And, sorry, what, what portion of the purchase is funded by taxpayers? Did I miss?
About a million bucks, is my answer.
Well, again, again, taxpayers, you know, we're talking about a property transfer.
But it's still a tax, that's all I'm trying to say, it's still a tax.
It's a tax, but it's on all sales in the whole state.
Right, but it's still, that's all I'm saying, not, not, not...
The whole state.
Yeah, it's all the state, it's just still tax. So again, my opinion being, if you're gonna have taxpayer funding, we should get some taxpayer input.
It's like a federal bank, bottom line, is it still taxpayer?
Still taxpayer money, right.
But that's, I'm just sharing everybody, and I'm, I am interested in your opinion, 'cause I wanna represent the predominant view in the community, so I, I am interested in it.
I understand that this could go through with you, it's a great...
Correct, correct, understood that.
Yeah, I, I should address the, you know, short-term nature, but I, I will say that we had to work with a family since January, we could not...
Since this past January?
Yeah, since past January. Um, and, you know, it's a long process to get a family of that size with as many input, uh, 19 members on the EVI board. It took them a long time, which it should have, to decide which, which course to go, and we weren't at liberty to start talking about it until it was a real thing. So our contract with them was signed October 1st.
Okay.
So, and we got our application into VHCB on that day, and we've been working to kind of begin reaching out.
Sure, so you can just kind of understand my, I don't know what you guys think, but just having a little bit more time to, I don't know what we got for time, but I'd like a little more time to, to get more input and to think about it a little bit. Because some of these things I'm just hearing for the first time tonight, so...
What is that kind of thing?
We have the, uh, Vermont Housing and Conservation Board's next meeting is December 7th, and that's the day they would be reviewing and making a decision on the application.
This is back.
In relation to... I also have a property that, uh, the open-up pressure, I know there's a lot of private properties within that land mass, are those affected in any way by the purchase?
Um, no, not that I know of, other than being a neighbor.
Okay, just wondering.
Yep.
Forgot.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, sir.
In relation to the, the point you were just making, I was looking through the draft town plan the other day, and I happened to notice a sidebar in there that has some information from the recent survey that the planning commission inducted around town, and it, uh, pointed out that three quarters of the respondents to the town planning survey supported or were in favor of conservation of scenic and natural areas in Woodbury, and the proposed forest district in the plan encompassed the entire spine of Woodbury Mountain, clearly designating this area as a place where the townspeople, as voiced through the town planning process, have suggested that this should happen. It was also a part of town that was violated through the community values mapping process that was part of the town plan development. So we have a number of lines of evidence that the community, the proponents of community members support that in this place, in the town, even though it was developed separately from this specific proposal. So I think there is some information providing input in that department.
I would say, though, the town plan has not been distributed and is not common knowledge to a lot of residents in Woodbury. The select board's on a very poor job, they give that to most of the citizens in Woodbury, the voters. Um, so...
That's gone.
I would say, now, I'm being, I only had to talk in 10% of the town, didn't I, the only 10%?
Actually, you didn't read it. Uh, let's, can I let the chair of the planning commission speak to those comments?
Monty, I, I wanna agree with your assertion that, that only 10% of the town has access. I thought you said 10%.
Just to say that.
Okay, someone said it. So we did three surveys in total, uh, town-wide surveys, and we held a community values mapping session as well, and we had over 300 respondents to our surveys, which is close to 48% of the people in the town of Woodbury. Also, uh, our town plan has been available since DeSel, excuse me, September 17th, online and paper copies. Uh, it's been on Front Porch Forum with links to it. I know Robin has been burning up her copy machine, making paper copies for distribution for anyone who wants it at the town office. So, you know, it's out there, it's been out there. We've held for the, over the past 18 months, at least one meeting a month, sometimes two, sometimes three meetings, going over the, uh, draft plan and also the enhanced energy plan. So it's not like we've been hiding away, sequestered in some room, you know, with visors over our head, making this... our head, making this plan. You know, it's been accessible. You know, if you haven't been able to access it, give me a call, and you can come over to the house, and we can talk about it. And if I just might say a couple of words, if you look at the draft town plan, and the, I have to put my glasses on, sorry, and the natural settings portion of the goals, this, on the surface, this acquisition seems to dovetail with our natural setting part of the town plan. Seems to go hand in hand with what the town plan is trying to preserve and protect in the town of Woodbury. And also, let me just go to another section. Also, to address motorized vehicle traffic and the preserve and the outdoor recreation goal part of the plan, we took comments from Elizabeth and Tim regarding motorized access in Woodbury. And so our objective in this town plan is to expand hiking, biking, skiing, snowshoeing, and offer of motorsports on, motorsports opportunities on public and private lands. So we've addressed that in the town plan, and the town plan, or the planners are willing to work with motorsports enthusiasts to make that happen. So, you know, the plan's out there. We have a meeting next Monday night to go over the draft plan once again, and then after that, we'll make any additions or edits, then I'll move over to the select board for the review. Yes?
I was just wondering, the draft town plan, like, what's the process, but it becomes like not a draft, but like final, you know? But is that like something that comes up at town meeting day?
By statute, once the draft plan is ready, the planning commission leaves it distributed to the public, we have to hold a couple of public meetings, so we have input. We held one on August twenty-eighth, we held an additional one on October eighteenth, and we're holding a third one next Monday night, just to be certain that we can get input from members of, members of the public.
You didn't hold one on October eighth?
Yes, we did.
I was hoping it was canceled. Right here at the select board meeting.
At the select board meeting, I stated that we didn't know what, whether that meeting would happen or not, and we decided, because it was warned that we would hold it anyway, and then we rescheduled the meeting this, next Monday to go within the guidelines for the warning of a hearing, so that we would be official and legal with that. So that'll be the third hearing that we've had.
Where was that put out, that the meeting wasn't held? You said it was up there?
It was put on, it was put on all of the formats that we have to warn the public. And, you know, I don't want to get down and bog down on the town plan, that's not what I'm here for tonight, but we, that'll be the third public hearing that has been warned throughout the town and all of the ways that the town is able to warn something. So if you didn't know about it, I'm sorry.
I think you need to start being a little bit more transparent.
Justin, we have been about as transparent as you can be, you have to actually look through the window to see it.
I've been coming to every meeting.
You have been, yes.
So that's me trying to get.
I didn't state in that meeting, in that meeting, it wasn't stated that there wouldn't be a hearing. I stated that I wasn't sure about that hearing, because it wasn't up to me to decide whether it would be you or not. And then it was totally warned and with all of the ways that we have in our town to, to warn different meetings and hearings.
I believe we tend to draw close to this, too.
Sorry, miss?
Hi, I just had a question about, you are requesting letters of support from the select board to aid in your grant proposal. Would letters of support from individual Woodbury residents have any help? Because that isn't help, I'm sure many of us are supposed to do that.
You know, I don't, I've not, I've done a lot of V H C D applications over the years, and we typically don't try to get letters of support from the general public. I think they, it might, it might be kind of a bombarding effect on them at some point, they're just gonna, but I do, I do appreciate the sentiment.
Which can certainly reach out to your select board. Yeah, you can reach out to the select board and write your opinion on this proposal.
Well, are we going, hopefully, to decide on this tonight?
I don't know if we are.
I'm not ready to.
I think that we're going to have to, we're gonna have to wait.
Okay.
A couple in the back, I'm sorry.
So let's try, let's try to wrap this up in the next ten minutes, okay? We do have other things.
I just love to say, any of us, and probably most of us who enjoy being outdoors and enjoying the woods, have been very fortunate all these years to have one family that owns thousands and thousands and thousands of acres that we've all had access to for hunting or any kind of recreation. And to have an opportunity for an, an extra layer of protection for this one special area that's not really developable, I think we should take this opportunity and let the select board level three, just, for a letter of support.
We do have one more meeting this month, so we got time to get some input and deal with it.
So this gentleman right here, could you just go on and speak?
Yeah, that would be nice.
Excuse me, I'm sorry that we've included you.
So I was wondering, you, you put a big emphasis on pedestrian access, and we've had discussion about hunting access. I'd like, I'd like to know or have it made available, is it on the website? The kind of information that you request from hunters and what the permit process is actually like?
Yes, yes.
That would be great help for a hunting household. You put a big emphasis on pedestrian recreation, but have excluded non-biking in the same, you know, in the same breadth, kind of saying that your pedestrian trails are, you're investing time and energy into pedestrian trails, designing them to a certain standard to resist erosion. I'm wondering what the H C C is designed to, like, impasse standards or another well-recognized? Non-biking standards would be knowing that those trail are sort of like, those trail standards are sort of coincident with pedestrian trails. Fourth item is, with backcountry skiing, do you foresee working with a state agency or any other private backcountry skiing coalition of glading terrain or managed skiing terrain, or is it just no cuts, not ever?
Sure. I will address the mountain biking and backcountry skiing glading issue. I don't know if you were asking a question on the first two things you mentioned, but the information about the hunting program is definitely on our website, so you can, you can contact us if you have further questions about that. As to mountain biking, of course, the public right of ways are, can be used, or mountain biking can be used on the, the public right of ways. We will not have mountain bike trails elsewhere on the property, we don't intend to have that. There's, there's so many places in Vermont you can mountain bike, that this is just a different experience. We intend it to be a wilderness area where you don't just go through it. We, we want people to have a different experience there. So that's, and as far as the glades skiing, we certainly welcome backcountry skiing, but it would have to be natural glades, those things that are already there or naturally created, we're not gonna encourage any kind of managed backcountry skiing, skiing experience of that sort.
Okay, does the trail renovation for pedestrian access include trailhead parking, renovations to land outside, or just putting up the signs, maybe cutting or raking it up to make pedestrian trails?
We'd have to put the plan together to figure out exactly how that, we, we don't have a particular plan, yet other than to, as I said, create an improved trail, probably on existing, but, but slightly modified informal trails that exist now. Yes, you have.
Oh, sorry, I slipped me off right here. Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that one of my favorite parts of living in Woodbury and what we have here is best seen if you hike up to the top of Nichols ledge, which is at the other corner of town, and look around, and you cannot see a single building. I'm unaware of, of many other places in Vermont where you can do that, and the Woodbury Mountain Preserve, or the proposed preserve, is a very big part of that view. I would, I would hate to see the property go another way and lose that, it's not something that's possible to replace.
You're gonna have to tell me when, when to cut it off.
Random, maybe doesn't have anything to do with our conversation, but we're all so concerned about the, this conversation. Has anybody taken into concern the fact that the quarry is coming and gretching up over the mountain, and now from my house on Will Hill, we're backing across the ridge in Sea Rock, where I used to see solid trees and solid nothing but beautifulness, and now I see a big patch of white rock that's slowly emerging over to the side of the mountain. Does anybody care about that?
I was right next to that, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the quarry is slowly getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Do we not care about that, because it's making us money? Or why, I don't, just putting that up there.
Nobody bought it? No, Land Trust didn't buy it, or that's.
So maybe that's.
Okay, let's give a little more people a chance to.
I'll just be brief, on the town website, on the contact section, there's a space, if you put your name and your address, and you can make a comment, and that'll automatically go to the town clerk, who, who Robin has agreed to keep a funnel for all comments on this particular subject.
And I've been receiving comments through my email, too.
I've gotten a few, but I would like to hear people's viewpoint, so please share.
Yeah, please share, please share away.
Stephen, could you be the last person?
Sure. I'd like to just say, say generally that though we may have made wide differences of opinion and strong feelings of disagreement, people have been raising their hands, we're practicing democracy, it's really heartening, we're all neighbors, we'll work this out.
Yeah.
So I just want to say thank you.
What would be helpful to me and other select board members, if we could just have a show of hands of those who would, in support of the select board, writing a letter of support for the fundraising efforts for the Wilderness Trust. So maybe first, just a show of hands of those who would, the fourth, the select board writing a letter of support for the trust for this. And then a show of hands of those who would prefer that we didn't do that.
I would prefer not at this time, but that doesn't mean I wouldn't support it if you would put it more expression.
That's fair enough.
There's a lot to like about it, you know?
Information on the town website about the project, there was a, a very informative kind of question and answer sheet that was put together by another resident in Woodbury that, I don't think it's on our website, but it did go out on an email, town email tree that the town maintains. If you didn't get a copy of that, be glad to send that to you, that addressed a lot of the concerns that were expressed at the last select board meeting that have also been expressed tonight. And I, I guess, it sounds like what we'll do, the select board, we will have this on our agenda at our next meeting, and if you, if you have comments that you want to send, or if you have other people that you know who.
The next meeting's the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
So, well.
Twenty-second is the live rate?
Well.
This should be here.
That's something we're gonna talk about, it's gonna have, I think it's gonna have to be here.
Lisa Nexton will do here.
Yeah.
You might have to wear your boots and snowsuit, but.
Yep, it's gonna be chilly. All right, cool, you're gonna be cool.
Wear your sweater.
Yep.
Quick question before you go. Hit all, hit the rest of the light switches when you go out. You're welcome to stay, you know how to do this.
Thanks again, that's why he's leaving. Next on the agenda, the town clerk's report.
I get job postings and news. Calidonia, it was in on Saturday, Parrot Gazette, News and Citizens in the World will all be published the tenth, and I still haven't heard anything from the Times columnist.
So maybe in the future, maybe we shouldn't deal with the Times, I guess, if they're, they seem to be the.
They're not responsive.
When is the deadline for applications?
I'm sorry?
The deadline for applications?
For that third road group?
Yeah.
Twenty-fifth of November.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
Then when I send it to the Times columnist, I send it to the advertising department plus Melanie that helped me before, and I still don't.
Hold on.
My recordings are up today, and then I sent the select board the information from the map containers about the road usage.
Okay, that's it.
And then you see that?
I did. I haven't seen it yet, but that's a yearly, yearly thing.
Can we act on it? We have to warn it.
But there's one section of road they want to.
So we'll warn it for the next meeting?
Yeah, this was new to me, but I think we do have to.
We do it every year, yeah, we warn it for the next meeting.
So we'll put that up, because, yeah, it's a standard yearly, yearly. But it is one extension that we weren't necessarily familiar with.
Okay.
Technically, he can't access it to a select board.
He has done that.
He said he wanted to have to a select board.
Well, that'd be good.
Do we want him to do that?
I, I mean, if it's a tradition.
I don't need him to, it's the same, it's the same thing we do every year, so.
Okay.
It's the same, it hasn't changed.
And is it the same person? What's, is it, it's somebody gray, right?
Steve.
Steve Gray.
Steve Gray.
If you want him to come, I'm not opposed to it, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm new to the select board, so it's new to me.
It looks like they want to add one short section on the county road.
On the county road.
Okay.
To the list that's already there, or they're using them as.
Okay. When I compared it to previous years, it was very similar, and if it's already been approved year after year, I guess I, I, you know, it's not a section of road that I travel all that often, I, I just, maybe.
They behave themselves.
And are you, are you familiar with that piece of road, Chuck, that, that they're, the new piece on county road? I haven't seen the email yet.
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
I'll just show the copy that I.
We can review it for next time.
Okay, so we can invite Steve Gray to come, or we can just look at the document that he's given us and, and discuss it.
I'm good with just having us discuss it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
It's up to you, Chris.
Unless you really want him there, I don't need him there.
If you guys are comfortable, I guess I'm the only one that'll figure it out.
Okay, all right. So we'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting. Eleven twenty-two. Anything else?
I have a board draft today. Well, I have last week's or last time's minutes for you guys to sign.
The last meeting?
If one of you.
We have a copy here, somewhere.
And I have, I have the copy that I have not read or signed.
Yeah, and I can leave that at the town office on my way home with, with the warrants.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Then the other thing I have, I'm gonna pass off the grading, because it's under first section, and it's the highest.
Okay, yeah, well, I just put it on there, I couldn't remember when the, when the bids were due, but I found, recently found they're due next Monday.
Till they're done, okay, all right.
Have we received anything at all yet?
We've received one, and we turned it down.
Okay, all right.
Good deal.
Any questions?
As good as ever.
I did ask people in town, and she is willing, I don't like John for none, but she is willing to be voted in, in March, so as long as we can get.
Okay.
John Reed.
She turned down, yeah.
John Reed, did everybody see the email that he'd like to attend the L C T audit class? And I just would like to, please let him take it.
Sure, anytime.
And send her an education that he wants for auditing.
Anyone wants to be an auditor, we'll audit them, we'll let them be audited.
Let them audit. And I think, you know, it's always been kind of a standing select board thing, if there's any town official that.
Needs training.
Needs training, wants training, the fee is so minimal that it's not really an issue with, at least.
Well, go ahead and book that for him.
Thank you.
And they'll just fill us.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay.
I believe Jake wants to take it also, yes.
Okay, great.
He will actually have the books audited by June meeting day.
So any questions at all for Robin? Town clerk's report?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay, town treasurer's report?
So the warrant's payable warrant for the last two weeks is $9,355.77. AP expenses were $44,751.62. Electronic transfers that came into our savings was $18,893.10. Part of that being was Swenson's taxes and their quarterly of $8,000, which is, is lower than what it's been for the quarter.
Is there a fight outside? There's a lot of people.
$8,866.15, which I disposed $55.50. Cash receipts, took in $662,650.23. Delinquencies, $25,658.45. I did, I transferred from the checking to the money market $640,000 even. I did my warrant transferring delinquencies to Ron. It was roughly 20 grand less than last year, which I'm super happy about. I got to meet, our VLCT passive renewal is up. So I talked with Chance today, I got to meet with him. There's some questions I need to finalize about the liability. What else am I doing? I still have outstanding invoices for the Capitol Road grant. So I made some calls, lobbying them to invoice us. The Mormon group being one of them. She didn't have a slip, so I had to standard show them that they did service.
Ms. Brady, how much were we, what was the difference there? The Capitol Road?
No, no, no. The invoices haven't finished. The invoices haven't finished.
We have no idea?
So I can't... No, no, no. I have the slips, but they're not doing this. I have the statements.
Yeah, the statements.
But they're not doing this yet, I don't have the invoices. So therefore, I just have the...
No, she's invoices, not statements. Right, she doesn't have the statements yet, missing the statements, yeah.
To pick up statements.
Checks cash and Twitter the bank in order to get our money back.
We, I mean, we have plenty of time for the deadline for the report. It's actually not till next spring, but the sooner we get everything, the sooner we get reimbursed. So...
VLCT, I gave it back to them on the chance...
So this, the VLCT, is this...
It's just the renewal for next calendar year.
Okay.
So it's giving all the information collected is an estimate, is what it is. What they base us off. If we're under a limit, we get refunds. If we're over, or under, then we owe them usually a cushion of about $2,000 to $3,000. Depending on where, based on our winners.
Or how much you actually pay people.
Yeah.
So at the end of every year, you've got to have it laid out, how much people were paid. It's what they base your next year's rates on.
So one thing that I'm going to put out, I have heard from low reading the liability minutes and speaking with one of the other funds, that they're going to be requesting more money for town meeting. So I am going to ask them to make a time review at a select board meeting to present that instead of it being a shock, being an article of why, to justify and why they are requesting more money. So I will attach the select board in that email to the different funds, and then go from there. Because it's going to be budget time before we know it.
We're pretty much there, we're pretty much there, yeah. Any, any questions for Brandy at all?
Good, thank you.
You know what, just mentioning budget time, because I did tag that in the town highway report. Usually we start working on the budget in December. Often we'll have a special meeting just for working on the budget. So I think we should probably plan, you know, and I'm aware Chuck that you're, you know, have plans to get out of here in December sometime. So it would be good for us to maybe at our next meeting, start talking a little bit about the highway budget while you're here. And I don't know how that'll come, you know, how that'll work out with our road foreman off deer hunting, but...
Yeah, you can have it, it'll be all right.
Okay, all right. Oh, good for you, good, okay, great. All right, and so maybe focus on the highway budget first, so we can kind of get...
Right, get it laid out.
Get that pretty much laid out, and then we'll focus on the other, other parts of the budget into December. So usually we try to have that done by the end of December, so that it can get put into the town report.
When's the first meeting in December?
I got it right here.
Okay, good.
It will be December 13th.
It will, I'll be going for it.
So we got to do yours the next meeting, the 22nd of November.
It probably won't be a bad idea to set an evening hour.
A special night for budgets, yeah.
Yeah, we've done that.
Not a select board meeting. Because everybody's going to have plans coming up here soon.
Yeah, but we'll do, let's do the highway budget next meeting.
Yeah, let's make that for the 22nd.
Okay.
And me and Robin can work on the general funds.
We'll just have to sit here till it's done.
We just have to just work it out.
Till it's done, yeah.
Usually it's not too bad, because usually the road crew has pretty well worked it out and...
Yeah, there's a few small changes, but it ain't a lot different from last year.
Okay. Anything else? Town treasurer's report? Okay.
Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you, Brandy.
So on to the town highway report.
Well, I only locked on 100, you know? I didn't have... Friday we had trouble with the lower overheat. Well, he said it was overheating. And I don't believe it was. And I called Cat Nelson and made a, made me a service call up today. But I didn't get it done, work it done. I see the lower's outdoors, but I didn't get it done, work it down, find out what's going on. I'm pretty sure it was the sending for the temperature. So we're going to get a bill for that from Cat Nelson, but... We've been finishing up for the home end. I'm having trouble with, I can't even think of his name now, but Chris Green. He hit that sewage pipe in. And I'm trying to get, I'll have to take those you, but it ain't you, it's Hans. Yeah. He's got the ditch, pulled it.
I saw that.
He did that last Wednesday. Said he was going to be there 9:30, I got over there at 10:00. And again, at quarter of 11:00, and he wasn't around, so I went back to work and got back over there at 2:30, and he was all night. And so I told Chris, told him that we, something had been done with it because a lot of come get the other ditch, and he gave me Hans's number, and I've been calling, calling probably 10 or dozen times. He don't answer his phone and his mailbox is full. So I haven't been able to leave him a message, so. I guess I'm going back to Chris Green tomorrow.
Is this somebody that Chris has hired to take care of that sewage pipe?
He's the one who put it in originally and didn't put it in the way it should have been.
Right.
And he came back to fix it, but he's still in there.
So it's still blocking the ditch?
The ditch blocked out.
Yeah, basically filled the ditch in.
Yeah.
Put a bunch of boulders over it.
Yeah, and he put styrofoam in that. So I really did want to set the boys over with the excavator, got that styrofoam up and then...
And you got to clean it and everything, yeah?
Yeah. So that's where we're at.
Okay, yeah.
But I'm going to call Chris, Chris tomorrow, I didn't get it done right until today. The other thing is, I've been to Westwoodbury four different times meeting trees people. And very brought it to my attention that it's a major problem. Over that cemetery up there, there's a public tree that I have to move around. That goes over 45 and then goes straight out right over. It's been hit with lightning or something, there's a scene right in the back. And if that comes down into that cemetery, it's going to destroy it to a center of stone. And they're getting ready to have a guy up there with a big excavator to stump it. And he's all insured and bonded and all that stuff. He says for 1,500 bucks, he'll take that tree down and get rid of it. But it's coming up soon, so.
We've seen it, so it needs to be done.
This is a conversation that Bear and I had when we went up and did the survey of that property.
You had it on there, though?
We were out there in the summertime.
Yeah.
When we did the GPR survey of the upper part of the cemetery equipment. Before they'd stumped it. And we gave that report to the cemetery commission, which I don't even know of. I've never heard a response, so I don't know.
So it sounds like we need to do it.
But it sounds like it needs to get...
Bill it to the cemetery commission's fund.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't care how we do it, but I think that...
We're going to do it.
It's going to be foolish to not do it while I'm changing it.
We should just do it, so just do it.
So let's do it.
It's got to be done, and we'll figure out where we're going to do that, yeah.
Because it blocks slate stones.
Yeah, they'll be breakable.
Yeah, those are, there's some old stones.
Those are old, the slate stones are old.
They're inherently brittle, and they're old, and they're weathered heavy. So, you know.
Yeah, there's no replacement for those.
I had a old lady come, he said, well, he said, we could take pictures of it, move stones, vault trading or something.
Yeah, no, we ain't doing that.
Well, yeah, we'll figure out.
No, $1,500 to take the tree down, sounds like the right, the right price.
It is a big tree.
Yeah, but you've seen it.
Oh, yeah.
It's literally over top of the entire cemetery.
It is. And it's popping.
Yeah, it's going to come down, yeah.
Backside of the split.
You've seen the bank that it's on, right?
Yeah.
It's not even rooted on the backside.
No.
So I think the select board is in agreement to...
Yeah, we're in agreement.
We're in agreement.
Take it down, and we'll...
We'll find the money, pay to take it down.
Okay. Oh, get a hold of Bear tomorrow, let him know.
Would you ask him to give me a call as well?
Bear?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have his number?
He does.
Okay.
Yeah, or you can give him one again, just to get it stepped out again.
Yes, probably. We're honing up some roads in the real bad, Kennedy Road's bad.
Yeah, that cornered by Bob Lords is real bad, or Kennedy Roads. That tore that up off of the last couple of rains.
Yeah.
Hopefully they'll get it before it freezes up.
Cranberry Meadow Road's pretty rough, too.
Cranberry Meadow Road's done today.
Because that was too wet to do yesterday, but it might be okay tomorrow.
Yeah, Foster Hill, the lower half of Foster Hill is done today. Kennedy, Cranberry Meadow Road is done today. I want to do the Kennedy Road from Cranberry Meadow to the White Dock. And the Cadet Road from Quarry Road up is stretched out to the washboard.
And he's out there, can you just have him do that flat spot between where the turn is up to a year-old driveway? Because there's quite a few potholes in there, the rest of it out through there is fine.
Down.
Yeah, you know that, sure. Head, yeah, head back just, just between that corner and up to a year-old driveway. Just, you'll see where it's, it's all tore up there.
Yeah.
I think if you just smoothed it out, it'd be good for the winter.
Yeah.
I know not to do too much, because it'll be a mud hole. It's a catch, a catch 22.
We're, yeah, we're trying to limit it, too.
Yeah, because it'll be a mess if we do too much.
Yeah, I'll get after it.
But the rain got after, you've seen it on that corner, it just ripped it up.
Yeah. Other than that, I guess I've still got it.
Okay. So just, I tagged a couple other things onto the town highway report. I know we're, you know, waiting for applications to be received for the third full-time road crew member. And then we probably should have, again, a special meeting to go, you know, to interview applicants.
You said that's on the 25th, you opened?
The 25th is the deadline, which happens to be Thanksgiving Day, I guess.
So what we ought to do is set that special meeting at our next meeting on the 22nd.
22nd, okay.
Maybe the following, I got commitments on my off Mondays, we can pick a night, we'll...
Yeah, we'll figure out a night that'll work.
Or a day, if we, depending on how many you get, if it's just one or two, it would be easy to do sometime.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we'll figure that out then, okay? And then this, we have been requested, you know, if we would like to try to take advantage of the municipal roads general permit highway equipment grant, we talked about it at our last, last select board meeting. We just, at this point, we just basically need to send a letter of intent. I think there's a particular form that we would just fill out for that. And the deadline is soon.
You wanted to get the gravel packer.
Well, yeah, I talked to Greg about it, and the turnaround was, it's 10 lines and not big enough, so we can get to create a turnaround with it on that. But I have been doing some research, and we can buy one that will go in front of a truck. And I'm thinking that 4,900, well, Greg and I both think that with that 4,900 with the chloride tank in it would be a great match.
So we should put the letter of intent in.
So I, I think, you know, it says in, in the items, my memory of, of reading that is that it would be something that could go behind a tractor, but I don't think it matters what the vehicle is that pulls it.
I don't think it...
That one was for the grader. The, the Burma was for track.
Yeah, we had the Burma, we were, the one I gave you a price for was on the front of the loader.
Yeah.
That was nine grand or something.
Correct. This roller, it's the fact that I may have a new, new email from it.
I think I said it.
I might have said it in the home document.
Okay.
Check any thing today. But we can buy a nine-foot roller that will go in front of that truck. And he's going to give me a price on that.
So we should probably put the letter of intent in.
Yeah, so okay.
It's going to weigh approximately 1,800 pounds. But it's also going to have a bone in, so that we can add or subtract.
Put some, some material in the roller, okay. All right, so we'll, I'll find that letter of intent, and we'll get it sent out. And we'll indicate what we're interested in. If you do have a price, I don't know if that's even required at this point. I think we just have to state that, yes, we're interested in, in pursuing, trying to acquire a piece of equipment.
I bet the next three days are going to be crazy, crazy, but after that, I'll have some time.
Okay, all right.
Get sent straight right.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have some time tomorrow just to find it and refresh my memory on what it's all about.
Because they're going to give us money, it's we foolish not to take it. Particularly, we have a couple needs, so. We have two things we could buy.
I can go through the list of those roads.
Yeah, so I think the one he's talking about is the one from Dog Pond to Greenwood Lake Road.
Is Steve Gray, the mountain tamer person?
Mountain tamer person.
Yeah, because a lot of times they'll access them up Greenwood and across to get on the trail up on Buck Lake Road.
Yeah, but he wants to use the trail from Dog Pond Road down to Kennedy Road over there in the corner.
Okay.
That hasn't been used for trail lately.
And it's been a long time.
It's been a long time.
They used to many moons ago.
Right, yeah.
But it has, it's been there yet.
That road was black.
Really?
The whole, the whole Kennedy Road was black.
Wow.
When I was a kid.
Wow.
So nobody, sounds like nobody really lived on, actually, you know, they just got electricity out there.
Those places, it didn't have power till, not too long ago.
The buildings were over the four corners, but there wasn't anybody living there.
Yeah.
Rick Candy, Taffel, Dana, Willie, Sarah, Adam, stuff.
Yeah, there was nothing out there.
There was nothing there. Flowed the whole road, then flowed down the other end of Greenwood Lake. And it stopped.
Yep.
And that tore it in.
Wow. Okay.
That's where I was when I was a kid.
Anything else, Chuck? Any, any questions for Chuck?
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Well, after the next three days, I will be required to send the last way.
Okay, yeah, whatever you need to do, just do it. Just, I was thinking the road mine had got too frozen to do anything. It did freeze the other day, and then it thawed back out again.
It's fine.
Yeah.
I know, I was, you know, doing some of the Beaver stuff that I do during that heavy rain, there was a fair amount of water kind of trickling around the corner of the school parking lot and running down.
Yeah, we're going to, we're not getting over there.
He's going to make some adjustments.
A pile of stone that's over there, pile of land to stop that trickle.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the final fix is to pave that up to the school and get our apron paved. And then, but we got to deal with the call, we got, it's a...
That reminds me, whatever happened to the, I'm blanking out on the guardrail that was going to be put in there?
Well, good question. I've called it three times. I was supposed to have been on the list for October.
Yeah, that's what I'm remembering.
Somehow it didn't get put on the list.
It's right next to my hose and ladder testing. It was supposed to be here in October.
Yeah, probably.
I haven't heard from anybody, so.
Yeah, probably.
Getting a little late.
So we'll see if they can get it worked in the next week.
Okay, okay.
Thanks for calling in.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so the next thing on the agenda, I got an email from Grace Vincent, the Regional Planning Commission person who's overseeing the stormwater mitigation projects in town. They, they would like, or actually, it's the Department of, DEC, the Department of Environmental Conservation, would like a statement from the town committing to, actually, let me read it. It probably will make more sense if I read it rather than trying to say what it says. So they would like, from the town, the town of Woodbury, a statement just saying, the town of Woodbury intends to move forward to the implementation stage for the stormwater treatment at the Woodbury Elementary School contingent upon available funding. The town is committed to operations and maintenance responsibilities. So we've already indicated, when the hundred percent design, when the design part of this project went into effect, we also sent a letter of commitment to, that we would, you know, maintain and oversee the operations of the, of whatever was put in place there. And this is the one site that we have agreed that, that we want to have put in place.
Right, because they only selected that one out of the three designs.
Because it was the one that worked.
Four, actually, yeah.
It's the only one that was functional.
Yeah, so what they're asking for now is a letter from the town that we do intend to move forward with the implementation stage, which would be the actual putting in of, of the proposal that's been designed. And the key here for me is contingent upon availability of funding. So we would not do this unless...
They're going to pay for it.
There was a significant grant that would pay for most of the project. To me, that's what contingent upon available, availability of funding means.
Because we're not going to fund it.
We're not going to fund it, no.
It's impossible.
Well, it would be, it would be, again, it would be a grant process, so they would...
I'm figuring it eighty, twenty minutes, but in order to put that in a budget...
Well, it's not going to happen in the next fiscal year, I'm sure.
It's not happening.
Yeah, we, there would be...
We don't have a number.
We don't have a number.
There would be an application process. It would be awarded or not awarded.
And Michael, may I ask, did we ever address the fact that they thought it was an above-ground tank, and they had to revise it for the fact that there is a propane tank that's buried right there in the way of everything?
Well, actually, the, in the design that Chris Rivick put together, he didn't feel that the tank where it is would be a problem.
Yeah, because the last drawing I saw was that it was not...
He did, he did address that.
He did address that.
It was on there, yeah.
It was on.
Yes.
All right.
The last iteration we saw, yes, the tank was there, correct. It was outside of the area of the tank.
And we did...
So yes, thank you, it was taken care of.
That's good. Thank you.
So, so obviously, we've gotten this far, and if they're going to help, I think the reason that DEC is wanting this commitment from the town is that they're basically are going to be the ones that are going to find the funding for us, or fund it themselves.
Because we're not going to.
We're not going to, yeah. And I can add that sentence.
Yeah, I think I put that right in there. It says contingent on grant funding by the state. Not funding from us, because it's an expensive little project.
I will underline that particular statement.
That way our statement of commitment is contingent on, not a vague, a vague understanding.
Yeah, and then I'll add a sentence saying that Woodbury, the town of Woodbury is not able to fund this independently. We would only be able to fund it through a grant. Okay. Good, so I don't think we need to vote on that. Are we in agreement that it's okay to sign? Okay.
I'm in agreement with that.
And are you okay with me adding that sentence and signing this on behalf of the select board and sending it in?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so as we heard earlier tonight, there is a third town plan hearing scheduled for next Monday here at the town hall, starting at six o'clock.
Are they going to tape it? Because I can't be here. I got a commitment Monday night.
I...
I can just read the minutes. I'm mostly interested in the comments.
Okay, well, there is, there's a whole new series of comments. Every comment that's made is recorded, and there's a whole new sheet of comments that just, I saw it on my email.
Okay, so you can forward it, okay, because I just can't be here next Monday night, okay.
And so, yeah, all the comments from the two previous hearings, comments that have come in via the website.
I'm going to be reading comments till my eyes fall out.
Yeah, there's quite a list of them, yeah.
But I will read them all.
So, yeah, so those will be available, and the comments that are made at this meeting on November fifteenth will also...
Which skip will document or...
Also be documented, yeah. So just finally, I thought maybe just we could informally figure out future meetings for the select board. Obviously, it's getting colder. We're lucky it was a mild day today, but it does seem that using the town hall going forward through the winter probably won't work, so the alternative...
We've been meeting in it for ten years. Nobody cares.
Well, I'll wear my long johns if you want.
I'm good at doing it. I can just tell you, when it's cold out, your feet from about here, freeze, and your hover part is cold. But I think we should not do it here, because we're going to, it's not, it's not a great place to meet.
Well, we already agreed that the twenty-second.
Yeah, we need to be here, because I think there might be some people here.
Yeah.
Because we might.
So let's say, yeah.
I'm not sure of your name, but Dennis.
Dennis, yeah.
So we got to meet here next week.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And I guess moving forward, we can meet at the community room.
We can meet at the community room, yeah. It's a smaller space, but...
Unless we have a big hearing, we'll have to move down here again.
Yeah, or maybe, maybe we could use the school gym, too.
Well, we can, should I ask about that? Should I ask about that?
You could if you want. It would be, the school principal is Lisa McCarthy, and I have her contact information.
It's okay, I have two kids in school.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, so you have that information.
Most of the time, the community room should work.
Yeah, and we actually should ask permission for the community room, too, because technically that is leased to the school. That's, is used as an extra classroom, so we need to get permission for that, too.
Typically, the after-school program ends by five P M.
Yep.
So by six P M on Monday.
We should be good.
We're in the clear.
Okay. And then the other question that came up with this meeting tonight, with people who did want to come and hear that presentation, fortunately, H C T V recorded it, and so it'll be available that way, but there has been a question coming up about remote access to the meetings. And in the community room with internet connection, we probably could work something out, and maybe I'll talk to our two skips about how that...
Yeah, if someone knows how to figure it out, that's definitely not in my...
It's not in my, although we did, we did have a planning commission there where that was our public space, and I brought my laptop, and the people that did come in, we all kind of sat within view of the laptop camera.
We can do better.
Right.
Plus, we've got, if we're going to do, if we're going to do that type of access, we've got to read the V L C T rules of, because you don't get your meeting hijacker, like everyone's got to identify themselves. If they're on their phone, you only get to speak at public comment, because it can become really out of control.
Yeah, it could be nice for some of our community members who are not necessarily in town.
Right, like our road commissioner.
I don't mind doing it. It's just, I can't, I don't know how to do it.
I don't know.
If you want me to do it, I just, I have to fly and fly to Europe.
I'm pretty confident that we have townspeople that...
Yeah, we do.
As long as they got someone who can make it happen, because I'm not the guy. When it breaks, I can't fix it.
I'm willing to get into that with some of the people who already are doing it.
Okay.
Is that right enough?
And we just, people got to understand that if it breaks down, we're going to continue to have the meeting.
Right.
You know, it's just that we're trying to do it as a courtesy.
It's about connectivity, which is another conversation that we have to have at this point.
So it'll be something similar to what we did last year when, you know, at, at that point, if H C T V is willing, we could livestream the meetings.
Which is what we did last summer.
Which is what we did last year, summer, yeah. So there is a way of doing it, and...
Yeah, what we did is then they, they had a phone number people could call if they wanted to.
So maybe we can do it with a phone, or maybe with a laptop. We'll figure it out. Okay, so let's plan for, in the future, starting in December, that our select board meetings will be in the community room until it's, until spring, and we can move back in here. Is there any other business? Yes?
Couple things. The town office will be closed on Thursday, the ninety-one, our